Alright guys, it's seven o'clock. If you want to turn on the mics and do what you gotta do. The clock starts the meeting. Stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
So are we make sure that Lisa and Jason are unmuted if they choose to?
They have muted themselves.
Okay, no, that's why as long as it's them, not us, I just want to make sure. Alright, would approve a motion to or accept a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make, okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 Aye. Well, we're gonna roll with three. So we jump right into this cut.
Oh, that must be, that's Jason.
That Jason?
Yeah, I'm here. It just took me a while to get off mute.
No, no, not a problem. You vote to approve the agenda?
Yeah.
Alrighty, so we're gonna jump right into discussion items. The first one on the list is the final transition, tran- transition plan comprehensive school counseling program. That's a mouthful.
So this, most recently, there was a bill passed, a Senate bill fifty thirty that requires that all school districts develop a comprehensive school counseling program plan. And this being, coming year, being the first year it's required, we're required to to have the board approve a transition plan. I invited all our counselors. I don't know how many were available. Thank you to Nanette, cuz she is here today. But we work, we took a team of folks up to the E S D and worked with some professional developers and several other districts worked on this transition plan. And the, the idea behind the transition plan is to make sure counselors are doing counseling work that fits the ASCA model, the, the national school counselor model. And so we were required to do this transition plan. Brian and I, as well as all the school counselors, worked together on, and some of our principals that weren't at the professional development. So we really worked to write it, and then we brought the whole group of counselors together to do some revision. And that, you can see, if you look at the plan, there's several areas. There's the use of standards, and they're defined standards, just like we have standards for math and English, and there are standards for counseling. How we're using data, how our counselors are using their time, and then really how we are finding and hiring personnel. And the idea behind it is that sometimes, sometimes counselors aren't necessarily used for things that are counseling, school counseling. And the, the ASCA model has three areas: academic development, career development, and social emotional learning. And they break it into two different areas: direct services and indirect services. So the idea is that no more than twenty percent of a counselor's time, and hopefully less, is being used for non-counseling services. The other really big idea is that you're using data to show that the counseling services that we're providing are effective. Counselors will use data over set periods of time where maybe in through the school data work at the high school, they see that our freshman students are struggling in math. So they will devise a plan where they're really doing some intensive work with those freshmen that might be struggling in math. It could be something different. There could be, you know, something around it that where we're dealing with a whole bunch of discipline with sophomore boys. Or, you know, there's kids, it's time to really work on them defining their career goals. So the counselors will be using data. One piece of data that they will use is actually tracking their time. And we're gonna do some trials of the use of time to see how are they using their time? Is it mostly on direct services, mostly on indirect services? Is it on activities that don't fit under the ASCA model? So Nanette, I don't, you know, you've, you've worked in district for quite a while. I don't know if you wanna talk about how this might impact counseling, the, the transition or the change?
Well, at the high school, we get to use most of our time for counseling. So we're, we're pretty close to where we should be at this point. I'm not sure where they are at other buildings. So I think the time tracker is gonna be really useful because, and at every level, it's gonna be different, of course. Because we spend a tremendous amount of time on, on academic counseling, scheduling, schedule changes, all those kinds of things. But the tracker is going to be.
Is there any way we can get to a mic? I can barely hear you.
Pull, let's pull your chair up right here.
Yeah, she's headed that way, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, have a new setup tonight. I didn't realize they were. Alright, go ahead.
Where I was. The time tracker is gonna be really useful because it'll tell us where we're spending our time and if we need to be spending our time in different areas. So that's gonna be really useful. We've already discussed among ourselves at the high school level what we would like to be doing. We should be in the classrooms. Not every day, obviously, but we should be teaching social emotional lessons. We should be teaching some career planning lessons. Also, teaching them to the advisors so that they can spread them out through the Mustang periods because there's only three of us and there's multiple advisory periods. So the time tracking, I think, is gonna be really useful. It's, it definitely takes time to use a time tracker and to learn. When we did a little experimentation this year, I found it to be a little difficult to put all my appointments in as kids just come in. You know, they just randomly come in, they don't have appointments. So that would be something, we'll try out some different models and see what works. And try to use that consistently through the building, and perhaps we can even find one that works throughout the district. But definitely, then we can, with this, this new law, we can feel that we can use our time as it should be used and focus on those three areas and, and not just be reactive, but be proactive. So I think it's gonna be really good.
I think the idea behind the transition plan is also that everyone's operating in a way right now that they feel is, what is what the building needs. And if there's, like, using that data, we can start to see whether that really is being effective or not. And if there's, like, say, for instance, at a building, a counselor is doing a lot of non-counseling activities, more than their twenty percent, then that, this is a transition. How can they work towards making that adjustment, that change? There are some things that they talked about at the, at the, at the training. For example, that counselors should not be doing any master scheduling. Well, sometimes at some buildings, the counselors feel like that's a really valuable part of what they do. And, but that should be then in their twenty percent. It shouldn't be forty or fifty or, because then they're not doing those direct and indirect student services. Although it kind of is an indirect student service, but not in the way that the, that this model requires. So the transition plan that we have here is our, it's just our beginning work that we, it's kinda to let everybody know that we are transitioning to a different model where counseling is possibly gonna start to look a little bit different. What we're asking counselors to do is gonna be a little bit different. And the big, really the biggie, we do, we do look at data. Oh, how are students doing grade-wise, attendance, all that. But this is much more specific and detailed and really looking at growth, like, it, growth could be the reduction of student behavior offenses. Their data might be around doing a small group of four or five kids, that are the, the kids that are, that are the biggest discipline producers in the building. That might be one, something they're doing over a six-week period. So Brian was there too. It, it was the first time, I think, our counselors have collaborated, and we do have some, had some, we do have some new counselors. But it, they, they, I think they talked to each other once or while, but they've never purposely collaborated, and they are going to. We have a lot of academic collaboration going on with teachers. They're going to have their own professional learning community, and they're going to work together next year. So they're pretty excited about that, too.
So is this the kinda deal if you have a, a group of five, six, eight kids that are, whether it's a discipline problem, or maybe they all suck at math at the same time, or whatever, the you and Brian, and the math teacher, you and Brian, and whomever could sit down and do like an intervention and sort of plan things out for them?
Yeah, it could. I think that's gonna be part of Brian's plan for a multi-tiered support system. So we'll take those, take that data and see what the kids need, and then go from there. And see, do they need a group intervention? Do they need a one-on-one? Do they just need tutoring?
And maybe in that instance, the, the, they might be coming in for some extra help in math, and the counselor's role might be in checking in with them and making sure their work's getting turned in, making sure they're not having other stressors that might be impacting their performance in the class. What can they help them with? So it really, the idea behind it and the work that the counselors have done and will do. So there's a whole comprehensive school counseling plan that every building and the district will have. This is just like step one. We started that, but it's not done. So this will have to come to the board for approval. Okay? Any questions? It's gonna be good. It'll be great.
Jason, Alisa, any questions?
No, I think it sounds great. Thank you.
Now, I assume this will be like most where we look at it at least a couple times before we approve it.
We just have to have it approved before school starts. So we can put it on the next agenda, like, as a, maybe a discussion item again, so it gives you guys, and then we can put it on for approval that first meeting in August.
So yeah, if, if you haven't made it all the way through, please take a few minutes and make sure you do.
I did find a typo when I looked at it today. We'll fix that. If we find any others, too. Thank you for coming, Nanette. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, so the next on the discussion items is B, policies and procedures, twenty-four twenty, grading and progress reports.
So the, the next policies, I guess, with the caveat of the student discipline policy is all part of the work around updating policies. We talked at one time about updating all of our policies and really looking at the policies that are old or obsolete, as well as adopting model policies that were either essential or priority policies. So this is part of that work to update it. We've reviewed these policies in the past before, I think at our last meeting. But we're, we're just looking to shift these policies to first reading, first and second reading. I think that there's probably more discussion later on down the agenda around student discipline, as well as the athletic code. But again, these are essential or, and/or priority policies that was to recommend.
Any questions on policy twenty-two-four?
I think regarding the policy, oh, go ahead, Jason.
Nope, you started. Go for it.
Okay. Um, I think it would be nice to get input from teachers regarding the grading and progress reports. Um, I don't know if we could split that up, like, a group of K through five teachers, a representation from them, and then six through twelve. And I know there's a special section, specifically the special ed, if we could have sped director or somebody give just their input, you know, do they have them review it and give their thoughts on it before it's brought back for, to be adopted?
So we have, we, teachers aren't really back until the end of August. So if that were the case, it'd be when we just have the table until we.
I'm meeting with the union.
Oh, there you go.
Part of bargaining this summer, within the next week here. And so I could bring the policy to that meeting and get the union eyes on it. There's a pretty fair representation of building reps from each building, and so they could provide some feedback if that's acceptable.
Okay, while we're on that subject, the parent group that Sarah Miller had put together. Also, I have some copies set aside to give them to kinda just read through it too and get their thoughts, so. Was there any other questions or comments?
So do you want me, do you want me to get that feedback from the teachers? And then I know that Andy, you and Jason have been meeting with parent groups. And so if you kinda bet that through them, we could bring that feedback back to the table and discuss it and add it, perhaps. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I, I think we absolutely need to hear from, from at least a handful of teachers and get their thoughts, and the same with parents. I don't know that this particular one is gonna be as important as some of the others, but, but I'm gonna give that, I'll give a copy of each one to the parent group, so. So yeah, whenever you meet with them, find out if you could have, forget some opinions, or get somebody to look at it, read through it, get their thoughts.
Hey, Andy, my, my only question was, does this need a corresponding procedure to go along with this policy?
Well, if, if, if I'm reading it correctly, it's policy twenty-two-four, and then procedure twenty-one sixty-one. Do those not go hand in hand, or am I?
No.
Oh, you're right.
I would think the procedure would be twenty-four twenty P.
Okay.
And I'm just asking the question. I think there should probably be some kind of a procedure that, that follows this. But, you know, maybe wait to have those comments once we, you know, get input from.
So is there supposed to be a procedure that rolls with it?
I was, I wasn't sure, I, I wasn't sure why twenty-one sixty-one there, was there, other than it would have been, if there was something about grading in the special education one? Okay, so what, what I would say is, the, the special education one may be one that we need to do, but maybe should have had its own heading. That's, that's one that we could bring back. But I think the easy, it's easier to do procedure. There probably is a sample procedure that we could pull. But it's nice to have the policy done first, because then you're not writing procedures that don't match. But yeah, you could do that. I think, yeah, that, I think that's just a. I'm sure Selena could pull the procedure. We could have that, bring that back.
Okay, so when it comes back the next time, the policy twenty-four twenty, we'll have a procedure, then it rolls with it. And then for tonight's discussion, whoops, procedure twenty-one sixty-one is a moot point then for tonight?
Well, you don't have the, I, was I just accidentally included? Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a, I guess, a typo, for lack of a better term, then. Thank you for pointing that out, Jason.
So is the procedure twenty-one sixty-one P not a item for discussion tonight?
No, it was actually put on accidentally, and there's no policy to, to, to lead up to it. So for tonight's discussion, it's a moot point.
Okay.
I just seen policy, and then I saw procedure, and I didn't dawn on me. They were different, so. So when twenty-four, twenty-four twenty comes back, it'll have a procedure attached. And then the other ones, uh.
When, when, I'd like to see policy twenty-one sixty-one.
Yeah, this is probably one we need to do.
And then also the procedure. So I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's. Alright, if there's no other questions or comments on B, we're gonna move to C, which is policy twenty-four eleven, certificated, certificate of educational competency. Who wants to speak on this one? I also noticed there's no procedure listed with this one either. So when it comes back, it will also need that.
So, so this policy is a kind of a, um, we have a really exceptional case kind of policy. Where a student has demonstrated educational competency, but for what, for some, like I said, kinda catastrophic reason, they can't finish. They haven't finished, they can't finish high school. That's what it's intended for. There's the application process and all that that needs to be done, and that would have to be in the procedure.
So this is still different than like a GED? This is a?
Yeah. Yeah, GED is separate, and they have to take the GED test. This might be, student is going along, they've completed their junior year successfully. Like, one example there, maybe some, perhaps there's some illness, or, you know, dad dies, student has to go work to help support the family. That's what this is intended for, something more kind of a pretty, except, an exceptional situation. I think the high school works really hard with kids in any of those kinds of situations to get them to graduation the, the, the regular way. But I, like I said, I think this is probably an exceptional case, but it, I mean, it could happen.
I wanted to listen to a podcast once of a guy that was running for governor of New York, and he was bat crap crazy. But actually, one of the things he was pushing for education was to get to about tenth grade. And if you could test out, you could take the money with you to go to a trade school. It's kind of a neat idea. Anyway, so twenty-four eleven. When it comes back, we'll need the procedure with it as well.
Okay, I had a question for Dan. When I read through this, one of the instances was like military. Just out of curiosity, and maybe Brian would have to answer this, do we have a lot of people after this, and is it mainly homeschooled kids?
We haven't done this. Hasn't been a policy in place. And, I mean, I guess, like, if there was an instance where a student had to go to the mil- military, doesn't usually take students that haven't graduated, so. I mean.
They do now.
The last three years, we haven't used this at all. I don't think we've used that, if we have ever used this. The other instances where, you know, kids will have enough credits and they wanna graduate early and not walk, we've had that happen before. But this particular policy, I, I've never seen it used. It may have been in the past, but yeah, it's right. In order to even enter the military, you need your high school diploma, so.
They actually changed that two weeks ago.
And it's, it's, it's something that, like, if you, like, you look at F, student has been homeschooled, has essentially completed high school work. I'm not sure how we would prove that or know that. So there definitely needs to be some procedure. It does talk about kind of an application, so.
Well, I would think there has to be some sort of a competency test where they literally.
Well, and we technically don't have such a thing, so.
But if this is not our, we don't have this policy at this point, then therefore we don't have a procedure.
Right.
At this point. That's why we don't have anything.
We don't have either one. But Wazda does a lot of times have samples that we can.
Yeah, so procedures are administrative functions.
Yeah.
And so not, not every policy that Wazda has a model policy has a procedure attached to it. Um, we can develop our own procedures internally. And if you want us to, we could probably attach that. But it's my understanding that this, this particular policy specifically doesn't have a procedure. And so those would be developed in-house. So we'd have to work with administrators on defining what that really looked like. So just kinda as a FYI.
Okay.
Is this a policy we need if we've never had it? And then, Andy, I, I Googled what you were saying about the military, and I found an article from military.com. It says, "After one week, the Army has swiftly reversed a new policy that would have allowed potential recruits to enlist without a diploma."
That didn't last long.
No, it didn't, obviously.
Um, so is this, I mean, is this a policy that every school district must adopt, or is this something that we can work without?
Well, if we've never used it, it seems.
Is it an essential?
Um, it, it may be, it may be a priority. I, I don't know the classification on it, but Selena had done a spreadsheet with essential and priority policies. And so prior, priority policies are recommended. So either it's a must, or it's highly recommended. It's not a discretionary one. We decided that we would tackle discretionary policies after we'd updated all the policies. So that the strategy was to get the mandatory ones or highly recommended ones in place, and then go back through and update all of our old policy with old language, and then take a look at the discretionary ones. So it falls within one of those two categories.
Selena said it's an essential policy.
Okay, thank you.
So we can update the policy, and then it seems to me that it would be a wise choice to at least try to jot something down as a procedure in case.
Well, and if it's an essential policy, probably there are some other districts that have it in place, and we can.
Or maybe, maybe Wazda has some, like, basic procedure or something.
But sometimes they don't.
Any other questions or comments on twenty-four eleven? So, moving on, we're gonna move to D. It's policy twenty-three thirty-seven, disability history month. I actually found this one to be kind of interesting. I didn't know this was. I didn't know it was anything, I guess. But it was an interesting read. Any insight?
Well, so celebrating or recognizing disability history month is one of our four required observances. So we've, we've actually been, the, all, the buildings actually already do this. They're required to. We just didn't have, don't have the policy in place, so it's just.
No kidding.
Formalizing it.
Interesting.
Martin Luther King, Veterans Day, disability history month, and.
That's your Black History Month. We don't, really?
No, we do Martin Luther King, which is in the same month, but there's one more. Constitution Day.
Constitution Day, Veterans Day.
Good job, Mr. Kenny. Three's, three's my maximum to remember, I think.
Alright guys, so any questions on policy twenty-three thirty-seven?
It all sounded good to me, unlike you.
If we don't have a policy in place, we probably need to get the policy in place.
We're doing what we're supposed to do. We just, the policy needs to be in place, though.
Alright, so not hearing any other interest or comments. Except for that. Well, obviously didn't. Okay, so policy procedure thirty-two forty-one, student discipline. We'll start off with policy student discipline. It's the Wazda, Wazda model policy. Was there any questions, comments, concerns?
Matt, how close to the Wazda policy is the prospered district policy?
So we had done some work, and this was in advance of Wazda coming out with it. We adopted it, I guess, earlier than the state produced it. And so we, we actually used what, I think it was like Bellevue or some other school district had put in place. Since that time, Wazda has kinda reviewed their policy and, and refined their model policy. And so it's similar, but I think that the, the model actually, you know, they have a gal by the name Abigail Westbrook, who's their lawyer over there, and she does a lot of the policy development. So in, in order to stay consistent with the state, I would say whatever Wazda has as their model policy is probably what we need to have as language. That's the same language that other districts are going by.
And this is this actually is the Mazda model po- Mazda, Wazda model policy. Obviously, rough night.
I know that the building principals, the principals will be the ones that would be administering it. Do you guys have? You had enough time to digest it to really think about it, Michael or? Brian?
More than comments last.
Yeah.
Be smart for us to meet together as a principal's group, PLC to pull that together.
The principals are saying, be smart for the principal script to meet together to go through it because but they haven't had time to do that yet.
So we're gonna see.
Well, I was gonna.
Go ahead, Jason.
Okay, um, one of the, you know, I don't have a problem with the Wazda policy as it, you know, other than making a few edits and and filling in some of the blanks. I think I have, and I imagine we would all have more issues with the procedure side of this. And I think when we talked about it, and I can't remember if it was last month or whenever the last work session was. You know, it's, it's so convoluted and it's hard to, to navigate. And it's open for a ton of interpretation. I think we need to get a policy that's a little more, I don't know, just a little more black and white, just to get, you know, some of the issues that we're seeing under control. Don't think, you know, some of these metric or these, I don't know, the, what's it called, the code of conduct, where it gives you the behaviors and, and the maximum penalty. I think those need to be evaluated and looked at with maybe a little tougher eye going through these. So I, I think that would be my only comment. You know, our policy is a little convoluted, hard to navigate, but the Wazda model procedure is, I think even worse. So if we could clean it up, make it simpler, and I, and I don't remember who said it at the last meeting, it was one of the principals, but or it may be the teacher, but we just need to make it simple and straightforward.
When I looked at it, I, the, the matrix, the, the sample matrix is great and helpful, except until you refer to the 53 footnotes. Some of them that have multiple parts. I, 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 I agree, like at, at first blush, it looks helpful, and I think it is, but sometimes I don't know, if, there's so many laws and so many things that surround it into this one policy, it's complicated.
We, we can definitely, kind of like we do with the safety and security, security committee, set up kind of a specific task force. Specific to this work, I know that the principals had talked about creating a PLC, but I think that some parent input. You know, we, we've had parents who their kids were assaulted this year. And so I think that they would be a stakeholder voice that we would probably want to include. So if we, if we want to do work on it, I would say that there's kind of a, a vehicle to do that, in that we can kind of bring some administrators together with, with some parents and I think refine some of the thoughts within the policy. Jason, we have had, Jason and I have had extensive conversations about making it really black and white. And so there is no deviation. If there is an infraction, then that's pretty spelled out as far as what the school has to do. And then creating some sort of an appeal process, you know, for the parent to come back and, and ask for some leniency.
Sounds reasonable. So how long do you guys think it would take Brian, Michael to put together? For you guys to sit and look through this, give your thoughts, advice?
As we move into August, I think it'll be a little bit easier. I know there's quite a few principals that are gone right now.
Okay.
On vacation. It'd be just a matter of lighting it up, going through this. To me, the hardest part, I know black and white is good, black and white is always good for us because you have a document that creates that situation where you're just following a script. And at the same time, life is not that way. Life is not black and white. There are all sorts of events and challenges within the daily life of a child.
Well, I.
And just to finish that off, just real quick, Jason, I'm sorry, that you know, for me, it's a, where does this start? Where did it start? Sometimes that's a social media. Sometimes most often it starts outside of school and now, you know, so that's where that gray area comes in, and it's very, it becomes very difficult. So those are the issues that I think will be challenging. Some of these issues that we have, you know, laid out here in the matrix will be easier than others. And so to give a timeline for that, as far as meeting, I think it'll be a little bit easier for us to meet in August.
Okay.
As far as the time it will take to, to pour through this, I, I don't know, I don't know what time to.
Okay. Well, and I'm, I'm sure it'll take a, you know, couple, three weeks to put together some parents to look at it and get their. Oh yeah, go ahead, Jason. Sorry, I forgot.
I don't, I, I'll just hold off on my comments. I think it's just better, you know, we get like you're getting, you're starting, you know, have some parents, stakeholders. Principals, whomever come up with the.
I, I can, I do want to say, because I know it's really nice, like what Brian's saying, it would be great if it was black and white. But so a years, so many years ago, when I was a principal, I had a kid walk up to me and hand me a knife that he brought to school. And he was, he was feeding cows in the morning, he was cutting the hay bales, and he fed the cows. If I followed the policy, he would have been emergency expelled. And I took the knife and said, okay. Now, had he kept it in his pocket and showed his friends, it would have been a different story. But he walked right up to me and said, oh my gosh, I brought this school, I, you know, and so Brian saying about, it isn't always black and white. That's what's hard. That's the hard part. So I put it in my desk and his dad came and picked it up and he went back to class.
Well, and I think there has to be, you know, number one, a, a common sense and number two morals. And if you can feed all that in, you know, we can work through a ton of this, so.
So there's, sometimes there's a little gray, you know.
So in the future, we'll try to get the principals together to look through it and give us their advice. I know the parent group has, I, I think at least six, six or so sets of parents signed into it or in agreement that they're going to look through what I give them. I had hard copies made of all these, and they're going to pass them around and make notes and give us their opinions. And I would urge the board to read through a couple, three times. And make notes and make suggestions. I, I agree, cleaner's usually better. You know, it's like doing the tax code, and it's ridiculous.
I have to agree. It's mind numbing. There's so much information.
But, but at the same time, you know, just like the story Deanna, you know, told. Either there has to be, you know, common sense. You hear of kids getting sent home for having, you know, paper guns and playing on the playground and ridiculous stuff like that, so. So yeah, I mean, there's got to be some common sense in there. Okay, was there any more comments or questions for 3241?
Another, I think another option would be, you know, for the board to consider would also be to really spell out and define actions associated with bullying, cyberbullying and fighting. Because those were the, those were the problems we dealt with most, and those were the things that caught attention on social media. And so I would say to, you know, maybe we give specific consideration to those infractions and how we're going to manage them. Because, you know, like we said, policy is developed to, in essence, solve a problem. And so that's, you know, really this, this came about in this review, why we're looking at this, is because we had some problems this past year. So how, you know, how do we want to address those through a governance model or lens?
Fair enough.
Well, I also think in addition to that would be the those that are promoting those actions, you know, whether it's the videos of the fights or whatever. I think we need to consider that as well.
I used to call them the Don Kings. Yeah, I guess it's a problem.
All right, thank you, Jason. So there's we've gone through 3241 down to the matrix. Did anybody have any questions on either the matrix part or the discipline response part, or any other comments? Having to do with them?
I have to say the whole thing, probably we'll need to come back to this.
My guess is this is going to be a multiple night, just on this one policy, but you know, it's, it's better to spend a little time on it, at least try to get it right as opposed to to just blow right through it. So, okay, that puts us to darn it, I just looked, it's the what do we call it? It's the per diem rates for the con, consulting contract for the finance department. Last meeting, it had been brought up, and there was a lot of questions as to the she's got it right, as to the, the amounts that the contract in question was for 50 days for $50,000. Having talked with Matt, that is a maximum, not a minimum. And then the other part of it is they were only anticipating probably using half of those. With that said, that's still a thousand dollars a day, and there was a lot of concern that that was way too much. With that said, a little quick math. Craig's rate when he left was 969 and change a day, and that's.
92238, it's 2122, that's if.
Oh, oh, okay, my bad, my bad. So it was 92238 a day. Total compensation as of when he retired a month ago. So with that said, we would then be, you know, he would be paying some of his own stuff himself. He just wanted to do a comparison and make sure that the numbers were out in the open so that nobody was there was no concern as to, to, you know, we were trying, not to mention we're pulling him out of retirement to do it, but just so that everybody knows what the numbers are. Jason, you had had some concerns on this as well? Maybe not. Alisa, did you have any comments on it?
I do. Matt, you had said that it would be possible that ESD would be able to come in and help in Craig's absence. Is that something we've reached out to them to get help on, or what would the cost of that be?
Yeah, so I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to Michelle, dear love, yet. I do know that they offer some of the services. I don't know if they offer, you know, part of the plan was with Craig was to assist in some of the negotiating that we're going to go through and doing some cost analysis. He does know the contracts. I don't know if ESD offers those services, but I will reach out to Michelle and get, get kind of a cost estimate. I think when we consider this, and I, I spoke with Andy too, we can reduce the scope of work for Craig. And so we're really looking at, I think there are two heavy times that we're looking at. We're looking at number one, getting the budget approved, and then number two, doing the end of year in October. The, the supports that we were going to offer Amy are nice to have, but I don't know that they're essential. So that, that's an option too, is, is to cut back on the scope and to confine that. So I, I will get, I will get some numbers from the ESD, but this is just kind of, you know, there are multiple, multiple solutions here and just stuff for the board to consider and provide some direction on.
And will the ESD charge for those services, Matt, or will those be free?
Yeah, they'll charge for them. They, you know, ESDs offer consulting services, and so they have a number of consulting services they offer through departments. So that, you know, one of the, you know, one of the people that they may have worked with us is, is actually a Prosser, a Prosser kid, Travis Blile. He was in, you know, my graduating class, and so they may farm him out. That's a possibility. But yeah, I, I could get some costs for you, but the bottom line is we'd be looking at, we're still looking at the same thing about fine tuning the budget, resource allocation, and making decisions about how to get a balanced budget.
Alisa, with all that said, I had asked around a little too. They do help, I guess, with bookkeeping, but not so much like with negotiation, at least not from a business manager standpoint. And you had asked if they charge, of course they do, I don't know how much. But I do know that when we had gotten Sykes, and I think we've gotten a nurse from them once too, didn't we?
Um, we tried, but we didn't get one.
They traditionally are, are every penny of what we pay plus extra. It's, it's like a sub, sub let some contract situation. So you're paying the wages, plus you're paying their employer a little bit to, to rent them to you, so. But I'm looking, I'm, I'm waiting, going to wait for Matt to get some numbers, some more definite numbers.
I, I did have a couple of thoughts. We, I think Amy Hill is going to come in and do a wonderful job for us. We were all impressed with her interviews. I for one, want to give her every advantage we can give her. The team that Craig had is excellent, and they will be so much help. But on the thing she needs him on, I, I don't think this price for consulting is that bad because I've heard what consultants get. You know, so that's just my thoughts.
Any other comments? Okay, so Jason, Lisa, we will go ahead, and we will reach out to the ESD ASAP and get some, some numbers for them and exactly what they will or won't do for us. And then have that, hopefully have you some numbers for the next meeting before we we vote to, to do the contract. Do we want to reduce the scope of the work and the days needed? Would that?
If, if the boards, you know, and I know that we're working on a balanced budget. I would recommend that if, if that's, you know, if that's a concern, then the number of days and everything else, then we reduce, we do reduce the scope and limit it to maybe like 25, 25 or so days. And see where we can get with that. And then if more is needed, we could always come back to the board. And just do the same thing, say up to 25 days. And so, you know, and then I know that we have resources within the system. Becky, I know that Amy will be on technically in August, but she'll be, she'll be in transition. And so she may be able to handle some of that work, so. Yeah, that's what my recommendation to the board would be to consider reducing the scope.
Okay, what are your guys' opinions sitting here?
I, I'd like to see it come back with numbers from the ESD, and then also look at what it would look like with the, maybe reduced to 25 days.
I'm on board with that.
Alisa, what are your feelings?
Well, my, my feelings on this are, I don't think the taxpayer should have to pay because we were slow to post this job. Craig gave his notice in February. Because we were, we were slow to post this job, Craig gave his notice in February. You know, we didn't post it timely, we didn't, you know, and because of that, interviews were later, had someone been hired. You know, they could have worked with Craig and trained with them, so I wanna see the information from the E S D, I I don't know if Becky and the crew are able to do the work. You know, without leadership from Craig, I think Amy's going to do a great job, but I don't think. You know, we've passed an emergency financial resolution, we're talking about, you know, having a balanced budget and cutting money to do that. This is money that could pay for a parapro, pay for a teacher. Um, and to go to student services and I don't see the common sense of paying for that money, you know, to balance a budget.
Jason, what are, what's your opinion?
Well, I think we just need to see, you know, get another, you know, another set of numbers, whether it's uh. You know, from the E S D, uh, probably reducing the scope. Um, and just see what it is, I think it's important, I I still think we need to get the budget completed and finalized. Here in the next month, is that correct, if I remember right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have right out of month.
But I think we're kind of on eight ball, but I'd definitely like to see other options and um, go from there.
Okay, we'll make sure it comes back, uh, we have something for you for the next meeting.
Thank you.
And I'm I'm of the opinion, uh, just to get it on the record that uh, we need to get some numbers from the E S D. And there's no, I don't think there's any need for fifty days, so. That can then be reduced. All right, last but not least, the activities code.
This came up, uh, I I think last year and we were looking at. Um, kinda how we, how we define the processes and procedures associated with infractions. Um, and defining that, just as we were talking about defining uh, discipline. Um, so any changes that need to, you know, any changes that we want made, uh, will probably need to. Put those into place, um, so we could hopefully begin the school year with those changes, so. Now, this is just as a discussion. How, you know, what, what potentially we would like to see put, put into the athletic code. Um, and then, uh, once we get some direction, we can start working on that, maybe again, maybe set up a task force. Or an ad hoc committee, um, that goes through it and reviews it.
Okay. Were there uh, any comments from the board on the, the activities?
I think it would be good to look at the W I A A requirements to make sure that we're aligned with those or to at least look at them in the discussion. And what other schools are doing.
Okay.
I would, I think too, like, when this was rewritten a few years ago or edited. Um, it's aligned, so it's the same across the district, my, my only concern about that is that. It used to be differentiated in major violations for middle schoolers and high schoolers because. Middle schoolers' brains don't, aren't necessarily developed, sometimes high schoolers aren't either, but um. When you, if you have a kid that doesn't make major violations, which is a big deal, we've had kids though in the middle school who have turned their lives around. And then going into high school, they would have no opportunities because they already would have been eliminated, so I would. Like the committee to consider looking at differentiating that from middle school and high school again, so that. Kids have some hope, if they did make some big mistakes, they could still. Have the opportunity to start over when they come to high school, because we have had kids that fall into that category.
Who are the stakeholders reviewing this? New athletic director, coaches, principals?
In the past, it's been athletic directors, principals, parents, coaches. I would assume that's what we do again.
So I've already had a conversation with um, our potential new athletic director. This would be the first order of business, this would be the first order of business to revise this or revise this procedure. And we, that's what we've done in the past, this is not a policy, this is a procedure, obviously it is tied to the discipline policy. But that person is is on board, we've already received some feedback from coaches in the district as well. It, yeah, so it is on, on, yeah.
So that'll be job one for Casey then, okay. Jason, Alisa, any other comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple. You know, Deanna, I don't disagree with what you're saying, um. But if you ha- I mean, are you referring if a middle schooler does three major violations? Is that what you're referring to, that they can never do sports again?
Yeah. Isn't that correct? Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, how many, does that happen frequently or has it happened in the past?
Um, it's probably happened, I don't, I would not, I would not imagine it's been frequently, um, my. Hope would be to give kids some hope, if they had the opportunity to turn things around, that they had some hope.
That has not happened in the last six years, I know that, privately that, I have to go back to my documents that go way back to Casey Gann.
Yeah. I I I don't think it would be common, but it's possible.
Well, even if we were to put something in there that even if there was three major violations as a middle school student, that maybe. After a year off, they could come in front of a board and, you know, request eligibility or something.
Just, just something to consider.
Okay.
Well, and I think, well, I think it still gives us a grievance or not a grievance, uh, review poli- you know, review portion of it.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's worth, you know, it's worth the conversation, I do think bullet point. Number two under minor violation should be gone, um. Yeah, because it seems like it's addressed. More so in the major violations. And uh, I also believe, my other comment on this was. Um, a reporting process, that we've got to have some kinda, and Brian, maybe you can help me with this, is. Some way to, that these incident- incidences are reported and are put in, you know, you know, a student file or something like that. So that there is record of, you know, first, second, third, fourth offenses.
Yes, we already have that, um, I have a, a folder that I put everything in, it's a digital folder. Um, and I guess that's the document I'm referring to that goes all the way back to Casey Gann, so that's not something I created that has been used for, it's been here for some time. Uh, we, anytime there's a violation, we put the name of the student in there, strike through when that. An eligibility period is completed or within the suspension is completed, um, so that we know when students can come back. And we follow that, that list.
The only thing I have is it's not in this portion of this document, is that something we should add?
What did you say? Repeat that, we just didn't understand what you said.
Sorry, I think i- is that a piece that we need to add? Language that, you know, that there is a, you know, paperwork trail on each of these, um, you know, offenses?
Re- requiring when you mean, or just?
Yeah, hopefully I'm coming through, okay, but. It doesn't say anything about a paperwork trail or a reporting process. Um, of these offenses in the a- activities code, is that something we should add, I know, Brian, you said you've done it in the past and. I'm sure everybody's has some form of that, but should it just be in?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, keep going.
No, I'm done.
I was gonna say, um, anytime there's a violation of the athletic code. Um, there are requirements there for paperwork by law, we have to notify them within the twenty four hour period, we have to get a letter home to parents, they have the right to appeal. Uh, so there is paperwork to that, all that paperwork is saved, so uh, if there. If you want that lined out in this procedure, I'm sure that that's something that we could do, uh, we're currently doing it, we're currently using that, that procedure anyway, so. Uh, it would just be a matter of putting it on the paper.
Okay. That's really all I had, with those two things.
Okay.
I would just like to echo what, um. Act was stated at the, um, by the gentle lady at the head of the table here, and that was that. Kids at the middle school, um, I'd like to see those, those students that do. Maybe max out on a major violation and it could be because they're caught smoking or something. That they have that opportunity to uh, maybe be given that second chance in high school because. Sports for a lot of kids is the motivator, I believe it's the motivator for turning their lives around. And uh, giving them on track for, for doing better things with their, with their life and uh. There's a lot of difference between a, a seventh and eighth grade child and um, and. Someone that's a little bit older, ninth or tenth grader, they, just that maturity is. Maybe I shouldn't have that cigarette, or maybe I shouldn't try that drink, so, anyway, I'd like, I'd like to see if, if there can't be something, some type of a. Second chance for those kids.
I kinda like Andy's idea of giving them a year and yeah, and then reviewing, I like that idea, yeah.
Well, you know, if if uh, if between sixth and eighth grade, they hit the three majors, maybe they take their freshman year off and they can come in front of a board. Uh, peers, coaches, I mean, I'm not sure how we work it out, but, I mean, it kinda makes sense, so.
The older kids, um, my thought is, I like the parent slash guardian student agreement. I would like to hope they all read it and they should be expecting to get a consequence for a major violation if they get it. The policy is that we just need to enforce it, in my, my thought. Consistently enforce it, yes.
Alisa, did you have any comments?
No, I think we have a good group of people working on it.
Okay, thank you, uh, Casey, are you on still?
Yes.
Did you have any comments at all?
Uh, no, I would think we'd form a group and um, meet with coaches and all the stakeholders, holders involved sooner rather than later. To get the ball rolling with um, some changes or modifications we'd like to see to the policies.
Okay, sounds like a plan, thank you. Adrian?
Um, nothing in the athletic code states anything about COVID and last year. When you signed up on family ID, there were things added to that, including the code of conduct. Of agreeing to wearing masking and all that, now there was nothing for the fall requirement that any of the players were to be tested. Yet, the football team was forced to be tested, otherwise they were told, they ended up being alive. That they would be, the program would no longer happen if they weren't all tested, and I do know for a fact. That it was only a recommendation, it was not a requirement. So in the policies going on for this year, are those gonna be removed from the family ID?
I would think so.
I, we haven't seen the health department requirements yet, um. You know, COVID was obviously a unique situation that we had not dealt with before, so, um. And I didn't do family ID because I don't have kids in school anymore, but I think that we're gonna end up with health department recommendations and we'll have to. Make a decision on what we're moving forward with or not, but those won't come out, I think Linda told me. She, they anticipated putting those out about, it'll probably be close to when sports try in the middle of August, before we see those.
Was it, was that around masking, is that what we were talking about, masking?
Testing.
The first testing for the football program and then the.
Yeah.
Basketball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball and volleyball.
Yeah, to that, and I don't wanna speak for the board, um, you know, I I try not to do that, but we did adopt resolutions. Um, about kind of the, the opposition of some of those measures, um. And so I, I think that the board probably will take, take those into consideration as we move into this next year. About stances that we had during that time period and, and initiatives that were kind of uh, forced, I think, so. I don't know if any of the board members wanna respond.
Well, if if there's no health department. Uh.
There will be.
Guidance or whatever, then it's, it's business as usual, as far as I'm concerned. It is possible, however, that there's gonna be other towns that uh. Maybe they, they wanna require something, so then it comes up to a coach and to whether they wanna. Do it or skip a game, or, I mean, I don't know how that's gonna play out, I couldn't tell you, Adrian, I really don't know. But if there's, if there's nothing from the health department that says we have to do it, then it's not gonna happen. So, I'm not opposed to testing personally, I don't think it's a bad plan. I, I am opposed to masks and I'm opposed to the shots. But uh, if they don't say we have to do it, as far as I'm concerned, we won't do it, so. I don't know what else.
Hopefully it's removed from this.
Is, is it still on there?
I haven't signed up for anything for summer, I don't know if they required it this year.
It's not open, it there, summer is open, it was not part of summer, uh, fall isn't open yet, we create a new every year. Either roll everything in or don't roll everything in, so. Uh, it was.
That would need to be on the athletic code.
No, it's not in the athletic code, it's, it's separate from the athletic code, um, but it was in, included in family ID. Um, registration process, but it is separate from.
Not a bad picture, don't know who it is.
You also have, I I know, at least earlier, Crystal Cole was on here as well, she has experience with this as well.
I, I know I helped my wife deal with Grand Views and and it was mandatory, they either did it or they didn't wrestle or, or whatever. Um, I remember very early on. Uh, being told that the, the W I A was watching televised games and trying to get a guesstimate of how many people were in the stands. And they were actually going after schools that were not following the five hundred, you know, people per. Area, well, it was volleyball was the one they went after, but. Uh, yeah, if they don't require it, I, I'm not in favor of it and we'll make sure it's removed. I, I don't know that.
For me personally, I think it boils down to the word recommendation.
Well, recommend and require are two very different words from my point of view.
I just don't know the, where, the, like I said, something may come out. Um, I just emailed my nurses to see if they have an idea, because sometimes they'll kinda have an idea, but I, they, they told me. Linda Kirk told me just a couple of weeks ago that we won't really get the school recommendations until sometime in August.
Fifteen minutes before the first game.
Maybe, or the first time someone rolls into.
Yeah, well, that's generally how it works. All right, guys, that concludes all of our discussion items. Yes? I don't think they meant to talk to us. All right, so that concludes the, uh, well, that concludes everything, uh, future meetings, July twenty seven is our next. Regular board meeting and then I think the next one after that isn't until the tenth, is that right? Yeah, I'd be right. That will be right here on the tenth as well, uh, Volter is six.
Thank you.